I call this meeting as Shadron City Council order. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection A of Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Before we have roll call, we'd like to welcome our guests for tonight. Could we have a roll call, please?
George Klein.
Here.
Miles Bennett.
Here.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Joe Johnder.
Here.
Can we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mark to approve the agenda. Can we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
We have a motion for-
You forgot me.
Consent.
Graves. Yes.
We have a motion for consent agenda.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Shane to approve the consent agenda. It includes minutes from the city council meeting from May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. There's no correspondence or report. The minutes for the problem resolution team meeting that was held March twenty-seventh are included in the packet. And that is all. Could we have-
I've got a, I've got a question about the problem resolution minutes. This is one of the things that I've followed along with since I got on the council. And I understand that as long as people show progress, that's, that's kind of satisfying. That's my understanding. I mean, that's a question. As long as they're showing progress on cleaning it up or getting it in compliance, that's kind of the minimum of what we expect them to do. But some of these have been on here since twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen. You know, the one gentleman that says something like he considered, you know, he had undertaken that under advisement or something like that. I mean, how, how toothless are we on this? Because some of these properties are just ridiculous in, in what we're allowing to be kind of an eyesore in our community.
The question of toothlessness comes to the city council itself. The city council would have to vote to fine or cite, I guess not to cite, but to fine them. Other cities have, I think the maximum penalty is like five hundred dollars. And you can assess it, three hundred dollars, but you can assess it like on a per day of violation basis. So if we want to get serious with some of these, we could absolutely start imposing some three hundred dollar per day fines.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm in favor of definitely at least having a conversation and getting a little more aggressive with this because some of these are absurd. I get it if the property is rundown and you inherit it or you purchase it. I see the one individual purchased one of the known rundown properties. He's taken broad strokes and big steps in improving that. But I mean, some of these we know are, they're just almost a landmark as far as their condition. And I've had, to their credit, I've had people asking me this year more than ever about when are we going to be doing something about this? You know, I'm, I'm all in favor of taking some steps to get a little more serious and, and motivating people to do what everyone else is working to do, and that is keep our community clean and well camped.
As the council representative to the PRT, I can take that to our next meeting.
I would love it. Yeah, please do.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of it too.
The, if there's a consensus among the council, I think that would light some fires perhaps. I don't know that the PRT as a board would be interested in doing that, but the council can take action regardless.
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would like to-
So I said nothing on three down.
That's, that's my personal recommendation on this is that we need to get more aggressive on, on getting after some of these folks that have just been kind of laughing us off, is my opinion of them.
Can you maybe have a comeback to us with?
Yeah, for, we'll have a meeting at the end of the, what would that be, the twenty-sixth? So it's just a once a month board, but yeah, so we'll, we can, we can discuss it at that meeting.
Thank you.
We might consider maybe one other council member attending that meeting. Along with-
Yeah, let me know when it, when it is. I can attend and, and speak to that effect. Fourth Wednesday of July?
Of June.
June.
At five thirty.
June twenty-sixth. Okay. I should be able to make that happen. I'll look. If I can, I'll talk to Shane.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Item number D on the agenda. Someone care to introduce that?
I don't use resolution, I'm sorry.
Oh, you go ahead.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one. Is, is to terminate the permit for use of public right-of-way with John Sutherland for a chain link fence located on Lot Four, Henkens Heights, also described as four oh one Henkens Drive, and authorize a new permit for use of public right-of-way. Subject to successful transfer of said real estate. And we enter. In the information that we were furnished by the city, there's a little explanation of the background of this special use permit. Anyone have any questions?
So we're terminating this permit that was put into effect a while back by Mr. Sutherland? Um, cause it, the, as I understand, the fence is in the right-of-way, the city right-of-way?
Yes.
It would be, it's just renewing it basically for this new tenant. When we originally did it in twenty seventeen when it came up, the fence was in the wrong place, but we didn't want to make them tear it down, but we did say, anytime you transfer this property, this special use permit does have to be renewed. Or a permit for use of right-of-way, I guess I should say, has to be renewed every time it changes hands. In case a future council does want to say, no, actually, you need to
Right.
take the fence down and rebuild it in the right spot, so.
So if the fence was to get blown down or if the utilities would need to use the easement for right-of-way, could it be built in that same spot again then? Or would it have?
When we get to the next resolution, I actually read the whole thing and it pretty well explains-
Okay.
that what happens.
Right.
In that regard.
I lived next door to this property since I was twelve years old for, for a number of years. And there's five or six properties that have the fence in the exact same line.
Right.
But the only reason that this one is having to come up is because- Yeah, but some of these other properties have changed hands as well over the years, and we haven't had to do this.
Yeah. I'm just bringing it up because if, if we don't talk about it in the public, then it doesn't get said.
In twenty seventeen, when Ms. Beningo owned the property, she came in to get a fence permit. Where she wanted to put the fence, I told her was in the public right-of-way. I told her I could not issue a fence permit in the public right-of-way. So she came to the council and asked to get a waiver to have her fence in the public right-of-way. So the council issued her a fence permit in the public right-of-way with this special permit. So that's what started this process.
So the other fences are unpermitted fences?
Correct.
I got you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Comments? Could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay, then on to item C.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two and move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Joe.
So this is-
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two to approve a permit for use of public right-of-way with B, Tracy, and Lisa Spencer for a chain link fence located on Lot Four, Henkens Heights, also described as four oh one Henkens Drive.
So now we're renewing it.
Right. I got you. Yeah, I have no problem renewing it. The fence is there. I mean, but I, my question was if the utilities ever had to get in there and actually have the fence come down?
We can get in there. It's, we reserve that.
Okay. But would they put-
It is covered in paragraph six of the permit that at any time during the term of this permitted use, when the city or any public utility shall be required to go upon crossover or go beneath the use herein allowed, said city or said public utility shall be allowed to remove, dismantle, or destroy in whole or in part any structure, material, and any other item involved in the permitted use without prior consent or notice to said permittees. And said city and our public utility shall not in any way be liable or responsible for any injury, loss, damage, or destruction of said structure, material, or other item occasioned by the crossing or destruction of said use herein permitted.
And is that also the same, essentially the same procedure for an unpermitted fence? If there's an unpermitted fence in public right-of-way, is the city or utility allowed to damage it at the owner's expense? Or I don't know if it's come up when-
If it's in our right-of-way, then we need to get in there. We're gonna get in there.
Yeah, that's, and that's basically what I'm saying. Yeah, so this, this isn't different, this, what I'm saying is this isn't a different treatment than anybody else down Henkens Drive.
No.
They've just done it the right way.
Yeah.
Actually, we do not have it.
Yeah.
They're closing and they said, oh, by the way, you have to do things that would like, uh, that was part of the description of the summit of the property with chain link fences in place.
But thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the setback off the street for the, actually, the easement?
I'll repeat that. The question was setback, Janet answered it, eight foot right-of-way.
Eighty foot right-of-way.
It's eighty foot right-of-way. If, if the street is in the center of the right-of-way.
Eighty foot from the center of the streets are forty feet each way.
And it's, so, and I think it's a thirty-one foot street, so if the street is in the center of the right-of-way, it approximately would be twenty-three feet back.
Wow, wow, so, I mean, the fences are only, what, twelve? Twelve feet?
I think the fence is in the public right-of-way about eight feet.
Got you.
If I remember correctly, extend a number of years.
But in mind, with the neighbors' fence schedule.
Yeah. Right, absolutely.
Uh, what I emphasize is just that this is, this is the proper procedure to deal with this.
Yeah.
And nobody else in the street has, but it's all the same treatment at the end of the day. Everybody who's got that fence in that line. If the city needs access to the, or the utilities need access, the fence gets blown up, it's, then it's at the owner's expense.
Mm-hmm.
So it's-
The people that haven't asked for permission will be more angry than they will be.
Yeah.
Cause they, they know.
Now they know.
They know that we have the ability to do this. People that put the fence there without permission, they'll be angry. Yeah. Even though they put the fence in. I'll tear the fence out if I need to. And the city's obviously gonna work.
You're, you're good.
If we need to do it, we'll work with them.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Now you never have to come see us again. For that purpose, yes.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, item D in your agenda. Can we have someone introduce that?
I have used resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four and move-
Fifty-three.
Yeah, fifty-three.
Oh, I went ahead, aren't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Well, then someone else can do fifty-three. I did fifty-four. No, I'll introduce twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three is to allow for temporary use of U.S. Highway twenty at the intersection of Highway U.S. twenty and Main Street for the Shadron State College Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October nineteenth of this year, twenty twenty-four. This is kind of early for this thing, but early is good. Gets it out of the way. Any other, any, have any questions? They've been doing this for a lot and lots of years, so.
So no one's willing to vote against a parade, is that correct?
That'll have to be a question at the next political forum. Is, are you pro or anti parade?
Could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four, move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four is to declare the twenty sixteen Ford Explorer police vehicle as surplus property and authorize the same to be disposed of. Chief Hickstein will fill us in on the details of why this is necessary.
Evening, Mayor, council members. This is the vehicle that I was driving. I was on a call about a month ago and went to put it in drive and it didn't go anywhere. Transmission went out on it is what ended up happening. Nine thousand dollar repair on a hundred and sixty thousand mile car with the idle time on that engine, the value isn't there to replace nine thousand dollars for a tranny.
Right.
So I've stripped it out and parked it at the range for now. We'd like to surplus it. That way we can deal with it when we go for a new car or when we have a city auction. So whatever's more feasible.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Do you have any thoughts on what you might get for it? Is this gonna be a deal where it's a salvage value?
I have no idea what it would be worth. No, I haven't done that research yet.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I have moved that we approve free swim day on June twentieth at the Shadron Area Aquatics and Wellness Center.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Joe to approve a free swim day on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which is also the first day of summer at the Shadron Area Aquatics and Wellness Center. Are there any questions?
Sounds great. Just about as tough to oppose as a parade.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the claims. And it's listed in our packet.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane to approve the claims. I reviewed them, the, the last one on Sergeant Drilling, which is the amount of thirty-two thousand. And maybe someone could explain exactly what happened, but in, in addition to, it says refurbished discharge had, but that included a new seven-stage ten FC bowl assembly, which I maybe have a vague idea what that might look like, but, which was fifteen thousand, so almost half of that was for that new item.
George, I, I'll be able to answer that for him. Tori had well number four gone through the testing process for the last couple of years. We found that the productivity of that well is not up to the standards of what that well should be producing. Therefore, what we do is we go in there, we pull the well. When he is done pulling the well, he'll go ahead and refurbish the well completely. He'll camera it to make sure that the casing is still strong. He'll look at the screens that are down in the wells at the bottom of it to make sure that they're not encrusted with any kind of mineral buildup. If they are encrusted, they'll go ahead and do what they call an acid clean on that. If they don't, or they'll do a super flush on it to make sure that that's all cleaned up. The bowl assemblies is actually what brings the water up there. The number of bowls is necessary to bring that water up there. That well is about a a seven hundred gallon a minute well, which is used quite a bit throughout the year. And based off of those decisions, what he's doing, Sergeant Drilling has been the group that's been working with them ever since Lane Christensen had been not working with us on some of those other things too, so. Does that answer the questions of what you're asking for us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's part of the rehab thing, but one of the things that we had, had switched is Tori is doing all these testing on the wells to make sure that the specific gravity of that is actually maintained in the level. He also checks out on the efficiency of the electrical usage of those to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck for the amount of needs that we all always need on those. So it's one of those things that we are glad that we don't have to do it every year, but every so often, you're just gonna have to pull one of them wells and, and get that work done on them.
Well, it must, must have worked because the water's good.
It's always good, George. Tori and his crew are doing a real good job.
So could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Johnder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay, um, city manager report.
Yeah, George, I, I have just a couple things since our agenda meeting that has been brought up to me via email. One thing is I wanted to point out that we did get information from the Gaiman Parks, from Memorial Park. We have been temporarily approved for it and we have a September first demolition day to start. So we'll be able to start working on that come September first, tentatively. And so what we're gonna be doing is demolition of the playground equipment along with those old tennis courts and so that we can start working on that process to get some of that done yet this year, if weather permitting. And then we'll go through that whole process of getting everything ordered back in, but we still have to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is for everything, but it's very positive news and it's something that people will see. As we are getting into the school district year, that we'll be fencing off some of those areas down there because it will be under construction or demolition for those parts. And then the other thing I just wanted to stress to everybody is that we as a city are working diligently trying to get weeds and some of the other areas as far as vegetation taken care of. Rick Hickstein and his crew has been out there working on many areas. I know Janet's been helping out some, some of those things too, so. We just wanted to let everybody know that please help us out and, you know, just try to keep things nicer for the entire community. And we appreciate all the work that people have done so far on those areas that have been kind of an eyesores, but just need reminders on it. That's all I have, George.
Thank you. Uh, we do not need resolution twenty-four twenty, twenty twenty-four dash fifty-five since all the council members are here. Council closing comments. We'll start with Shane.
What do I have? All right, uh, closing comments. Uh, just like to emphasize the fire department is still seven people down and they only have nine EMTs on staff and quite a few calls, so, uh, if there's anyone interested, um, we, I'm sure Brandon would take them. Also, uh, kind of a nonprofit, I always like to give shouts to is American Legion. They always have great meals. Down there at five thirty, um, five thirty-seven on Thursdays. Um, and then two other things I'd like to shout out, which kind of aren't in Shadron, but Shadron State Park is having their hundred and third anniversary and they're having a lot of think vendors and music and stuff like that. Attend and then, then the post-playhouse at Fort Rob is a good, uh, good thing for people around here to, to attend to and, and, uh, help support, so that's all I have.
I've been spending a lot of time on the road around Shadron, getting things working for folks and reflecting on how valuable my staff is. And while I've been driving around, I've noticed the school with their seasonal staff and the college with their seasonal staff and the city with their seasonal staff and thinking about what we do with our students and our folks who, who work during our summer months to get things ready to go for the rest of the year. And I just want to thank everyone who hires, mentors, teaches, trains, encourages and, and works in these seasonal positions because I know in my, it gets the backbone of my, of my business, I depend on my seasonal staff and I can't tell you how much I appreciate them and watching everybody else with their equipment out and about and doing what we're going to be doing has a big part of what makes Shadron run. So thanks to everyone who is pitching in and enjoying these seasonal positions. I know some of the happiest moments in my life were summertime work and good for, good people and learning a lot from them.
Just want to mention, um, my wife and I went out to the Dawes County Museum yesterday for the ribbon cutting of significant donors. Media was there. And their garden party and in the past, they've had a little program. They substituted that with the ribbon cutting, honoring the significant donors and, and their displays. And I should have the, the names. I, I remember Carl Larson and his phone uh, display is out there. And so if, going out sometimes, go and check those things out. And the garden party, my, my comment was we had an entertainer there. And I was disappointed that we had a garden party, but he didn't sing Rick Nelson's garden song about went to a garden party.
Shameful.
Referred to Madison.
I'll write a letter to the mayor.
Madison Square Garden, so, yeah. And I want to thank chief and city manager for paying attention, mentioning the weeds and Rick does a fair amount of word work to encourage people to move them along and, uh, you know, and if I'm gonna go out on a limb and, you know, if anybody has any weeds and they can't get to them, give me a call. We'd like to take care of them when they're easy. You know, one little spray bottle of we'll take those things out of the sidewalk now really easily and except when they're growing six inches tall, it might take, take a little more chemicals, so. And my mom, she, she boiled water and boiling water will kill a weed. It's hard to imagine, but it will. But you gotta be quick, you know?
You gotta run with boiling water.
So. That's all I have.
I, uh, since I was gone last meeting, I just wanted to, uh, say thank you to the citizens, uh, for voting in the primary election and say I was pleased to see that the lodging tax passed and looking forward, especially with the news of the Gaiman Parks grant coming back hopefully, but, uh, hopefully good, uh, that we'll be able to do some more capital projects in our parks. It's one of the great things about living in Shadron, uh, is having great parks and I think that's gonna be wonderful. To help support all of our facilities around the city and, uh, give us some opportunities to really do some great stuff. Just a reminder as well, the crazy horse riders are coming through tonight, so dumbest chance to, uh, watch them pass by through town on their way out to the fairgrounds.
Well, I would like to wish my, uh, my wife a happy anniversary. She's put up with me for twenty-nine years.
You got a dinner date after this?
Well, she's not feeling that well, so I'll maybe bring something back. It also so happens to be her thirty-year anniversary working for Shadron Community Hospital, so. Just wanna, she's a very compassionate person, a much better person than I am. I say that many a time. So she, she, she does a, a lot for, um, the people that she serves, so I, I appreciate her.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Well, the last item on the agenda other than the adjourning is a job performance evaluation for city manager. is a job performance evaluation for city manager Tom Menke. Uh, we furnished at my direction a copy of the blank evaluation form, if if you wanna refer to that, you know, and I'll just summarize. Each of the council members did their own evaluation and then turned it into me and then I compiled them and, uh, averaged the results and I'll just go over with the, they're rated on five items and then an overall performance rating, so. And the organ organizational management and leadership, it scaled on its low of one to a high of five and Tom's evaluation came out at three point eight. Item number two, fiscal and business management, um, has same one to five scale. Came out an average of three point six. Communication and relationship with mayor and city council, uh, averaged out at four point oh. Community and governmental relations came out of three point six. Personal and professional traits also came out of three point six. And the overall performance rating was a three point six, so. Anyone have any comments, if if you wanna get into the comments that you made, all the comments prepared to Tom and all of you received a comment. And hopefully I didn't misspell anything. When I was doing this, I pressed the wrong button and lost everything, so I got to do part of it twice.
Done that a few times.
And I learned to click on that automatic save button. So I did learn something.
I guess, Tom, did you have any response to any of the, anything in the evaluation? I know in the past we've had folks, you know, do you have an oral response or just a written response or there were no responses, it's I just, if there was anything you wanted to say.
Well, I I feel that the council was very generous in their their overall ratings for what we've done. I appreciate the encouraging comments that was made. Um, I appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to do this out in an open minute, or open meeting, um, because I think it it's necessary that our citizens know that you guys are are showing what we're trying to get done and how we're accomplishing things. Um, I really don't have anything other than like I've always asked and I I will continue to ask, my door is always open. If there's something out there that you guys don't see or don't like, don't hesitate, please come and talk to me and we'll get things moving around or I'll try to explain what we're looking at and things. Um, I do know that there was a a few comments about maybe some of the communications needs to be a little better. Um, and so I I will definitely try to do some of those things and and, uh, just overall, I I truly appreciate, I I think if I would have done, George asked me if I would have done my own self evaluation, I think I would have scored quite a bit lower, um, just because it is a new position for me, but I appreciate the confidence in what the the council's, uh, given to me, so.
As far as the the public's concerned, I I would like to say that, uh, you know, that three point six seems almost a little little low, I think, I think the job you're doing is, uh, for for a new position, I I think you're doing a very good job and and, uh, the three point six overall, I feel, um, it is a little low, so for the for the public out there, uh, I think Tom's doing a good job.
Well, and if you look at that scaling, it says meets expectations, that's mean, um, if you look at my job description, that's the way I look at it, is that I'm doing what you guys are asking me to do.
Right.
Um, and and that's all I can ask of any of my people when I give out evaluations for any of my guys. If they're doing my my job description and they're doing that to the best of their abilities or if we need to tweak a few things, so I feel very positive on that and I appreciate those comments, Mark, but I I do believe, uh, like I said, um, I'm trying to do everything that you guys are asking me to do and if there's more, we can definitely get more things done, we just gotta give me a little time, we'll get it done.
Say keep up the good work.
I think it's clear from the from the evaluation that you have the confidence of the council and I'm glad, um, for not just the public, but for city staff to see it. Um, and on the point of public communication too, communication's a two way street, you gotta have, you can pitch all you want, but you gotta have somebody to catch on the other end and if people aren't tuning in, um, you know, then then you they they're not gonna receive, so, um, that's something that's come up, I think uh, every, almost every year, um, is public communication and it would be lovely if people would tune in and follow along with, you know, some of what we have to say, but people just aren't gonna watch the city channel on on the uh, Great Plains every day just to get their to get their updates, so I think that's, I think I think you're putting in the work and I think that that's, um, more than enough.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If not. I I I I have one more, I just like to say that something that people don't see that maybe Tom has that we didn't have maybe before is that he truly loves the town of Chattern. Um, I feel like it's home for him for for many years now and he truly loves it and treats it as if it's his own own home, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm good. And it's all been said, I'm complete confidence in Tom, very pleased.
So do I. I would like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second that.
Seconded by everyone.
I I made the motion. We'll give that one to Shane.